Good morning. I'd like to welcome everybody to the Tuesday, April 1st meeting of the St. Joseph County Board of Commissioners. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. First item on our agenda today is approval of the accounts payable docket. Do we have a motion?
We'll move.
Second.
The motion is second. Commissioner Morton?
Aye.
Commissioner Hazen?
Aye.
Commissioner Baxmeyer?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Next, the Green Township Advisory Board appointment. Somebody going to speak on this, or do I need to?
Sure. So this is the appointment for an advisory board member of Green Township. Under Indiana law, caucuses to be held. If a caucus is not held within that amount of time, comes to the Board of Commissioners for an appointment. Caucus was not held within the 30-day requirement, so now it's before the Board of Commissioners to make an appointment.
With that, before we move on.
I will note also, the auditor has supplied the notice required by statute.
Just gonna, gonna add that. Did anybody sign up to speak on any agenda item? Okay. If not, wait one second. Okay. If not, it is. I will open it up for discussion, or wait a minute. Oh, any discussion on this before we? I have one question or maybe a point in here. There was a caucus held, right, and a vote was taken, but it didn't count because it wasn't done in time, right?
Correct. That is correct, yes.
So with that, we'll open it up for nominations to the Green Township Advisory Board.
I would like to nominate Matt Mert as a nomination, or as a, I guess, what is it, trustee?
No, board member.
Board member, yeah.
I'll second that.
No other nominations? Close the nomination, then a motion would be appropriate.
Make a motion for Matt Mert to be the trustee of the board.
Second.
The motion is second. Commissioner Morton?
Aye.
Commissioner Hazen?
Aye.
Commissioner Baxmeyer?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Moving on, just a notice, the Purdue Extension Office will be closed on Friday for Ag Days at the St. Joseph County 4H Fairgrounds. Just so you know. Want to deviate just for a moment from our agenda. Sadly, we are losing a valued employee of the county, John Carlson, who has been the head of our GIS department for several years, now for a long time. And John, correct me, I think you've been with us over 30 years? Thirty-one years?
Eight day off.
Well, I was hoping that your resignation would be an April Fool's joke, but I gather it's not. And we do want to recognize the valuable contribution that you've made to our county over the last 31 years. You and Bev are the cornerstone of our GIS department, which has become increasingly important, not only to redevelopment, but virtually throughout the county. Your services are invaluable. Our loss is certainly Florida's gain. Why you want to leave this great weather we have for Florida? Well, everybody has choices to make, so, no. In all seriousness, we do greatly appreciate everything you've done. And we want to recognize that by offering you, providing you with the key to the county. So please come up so we can. Can see, we really didn't want to give John the key. But just for clarification, on the key, it has the names of the county commissioners. And we haven't yet received the new key with Raphael's name on it. So we're gonna make sure that John gets a new key, first one we've given, with all three of our names on it. And again, and in case you're wondering, it wasn't on the agenda because we didn't realize that. We knew it was coming up, but Friday is John's last day. So this is the last chance to do it before he departs for sunnier climates and a new challenge in Florida. Moving on to IPG, we have a request to advertise for RS 92501D, Community Crossings Matching Grant Maintenance Asphalt Overlay. Boy, that's a mouthful.
Good morning, Sky Matters, Department of Infrastructure Planning and Growth, offices on the 7th and 11th floor. We are requesting approval to advertise this Friday, April 4th and April 11th for bidding our mainline package this year, which will include about 11.4 miles of roads throughout the county, and it will be utilizing the Community Crossings Matching Grant that we were awarded this year of $1.5 million. That is a 50-50 match, so we have to match that and put in 1.5 of our own. And it's actually, the project's actually going to be a little more than 3 million because we are doing some other items that won't be covered by the grant. We are looking to have the bid opening on April 22nd, and I'd be happy to answer any questions, and we request your approval.
Sky, this is straightforward. We're just advertising for bids.
Yes, sir.
Any questions?
Sky, did you just mention there'll be some other work being done also?
Yes, well, there'll be some other roads that will be doing, addressing that weren't actually part of the grant. The 1.5 million can only be spent on specific roads and specific items on that road, and NDOT's very particular on that. For instance, if we have, say we have $200,000 for this mile stretch of road, and we put the grant in, and say, for instance, we come in and we only spend 150,000, we cannot use that 50,000 elsewhere. And so we are doing some other items. We're putting some cold compacted asphalt pavement that we have had left over from last year on a couple miles of roads. We're gonna have the contractor do that for us, which we could do that work ourselves if we had our own paver, just, just saying. But, um, but we, uh, yeah, we're doing some other things on that. And then after this, once we get the bids in for this and find out how much the bids come in and how much funding we have available after this, and can add to some of the other funding we have, we will be putting out a subdivision package, looking at probably a couple miles in various subdivisions, well, a couple miles total, and doing some work on roads in various subdivisions.
One question on this, but did you figure out what the per mile is for this year compared to last year? Are we gonna go up quite a bit, or?
Well, we use last year's bids and bump it up a little bit. We won't know until the bids actually come in. Yes, sir. But they, I mean, we, the starting point is $350,000 per mile.
Further questions or comments? If not, do we have a motion to approve the bid request to advertise for the Community Crossings Matching Grant Maintenance?
Second.
The motion is second. Commissioner Morton?
Aye.
Commissioner Hazen?
Aye.
Commissioner Baxmeyer?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Oh, you're still here?
Yeah, I'm here for a couple more. Actually, three more, sorry. Gotta look at my ugly mug a little bit longer.
Next is approval of supplement number one for engineering services for DES number 1902817, the Mayflower Road over Norfolk Southern and the Northern Indiana Commuter Transportation District railroads.
This request is for supplemental for engineering fees. DLZ was the engineer on that project, and there were some items that came up that were were unforeseen, and we hadn't originally scoped those. There were some additional utilities that were out there that we had to take care of. There was some additional design elements that came about due to the railroad. And there were a couple other things, and so what, what we've done is we've moved, moved the items, money for items that weren't completely used or weren't used, moved everything around. And by the time it's all moved around, it comes up to an increase of $45,835 of the original contract fee of $733,700. It's about a 6.3% increase. And we reviewed this and recommend your approval. Happy to answer any questions.
Any questions? Being on the NICD board, I had heard some of this at our meetings, so I think it is justified. And glad you were able to move some things around, and where funds weren't totally expended, applied towards these changes.
Yep, yes, sir. We try to do that whenever we can.
If there are no further questions, do we have approval of supplemental number one?
So move.
Okay.
The motion is second. Commissioner Morton?
Aye.
Commissioner Hazen?
Aye.
Commissioner Baxmeyer?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Next item, approval of Infotech License Agreement with Appia Construction Administration and Inspection Services.
So when we're out inspecting projects, we have inspectors that inspect our, our own, you know, paving projects. Sometimes we'll inspect our own bridge projects, small structure projects. We need a way to document everything that's going on, and also to keep track of what items were, you know, constructed that day, and do pay applications and change orders. In the past, you know, back when Sky Matters was a young man, we used to do that with paper and a pencil. Then, you know, we got these fancy computers and started doing it with Excel, and we had an Excel program that's worked, worked well for the past few years that was built actually by some previous county employees. There's macros in it and everything else, and it was password protected, and only one person was supposed to have the password. Well, by the time it was all said and done, about five people had the password, and certain things would get changed, and you would spend hours chasing a penny just to make things match. So we got to looking around and trying to find something web-based so that we could actually, you know, do everything in the field and not have to come back to the office with notes and put everything in there. And we found this Construction Administration Inspection software by Appia. We had a a couple demos, talked with them, and it looks like it, it'll do just exactly what we would like it to do. And what we're requesting is a total of seven licenses. Those licenses are about, are roughly annually $1,750 annually. They're giving us a break of one free license this year, so the total ends up being 14,000 for this year. And then next year, we'll have to renew at that 1750 per license. Happy to answer any questions. I think that this will be a great thing for us. Our staff is excited to get away from the other stuff and get back, get into something where it's, they're not chasing pennies. So I'd request your approval and happy to answer any questions.
Well, we'll be anxious to see how that works this year, assuming we approve it.
I am too. I think it'll be very helpful. We spend a lot of time trying to sometimes find documentation that didn't get put in the right spot, and this will put it all in one place, so.
Managing information is becoming increasingly important.
Yes, sir.
Gentlemen, any other questions for Sky? If not, do we have a motion to approve the Infotech License Agreement?
So move. Second.
Motion is second. Commissioner Morton?
Aye.
Commissioner Hazen?
Aye.
Commissioner Baxmeyer?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Approval of TerraCon Phase 1 Geotechnical Services Site Characterization on Dogwood Road from Shively to Riley Roads.
A couple years ago, we were doing some paving out on Dogwood Road, and we had a spot where the road was, was, there was some settlement in the road, and it was severely uneven, and it became a point where we had to close the road because we thought it was sort of dangerous with throwing, it would throw people in the other lane. So we went in and tried to do some subgrade work to that and put in some millings and then pavement, and it was fine for a year, year and a half, but now it's starting to settle again to get to the point where it's doing the same thing. And so what this request is for, proposal, to have a geotechnical firm to come in, do some investigation, find out the real root of the problem so that we can address it and not just keep throwing money at the problem, trying to guess what's wrong with it, so. This is in the amount of $16,288.59, not to exceed, and it's with TerraCon. Recommend your approval.
So if I understand you right, period back, you pulled up the pavement, tried to surcharge that with billings and to try to beef up the subgrade?
Yes, we tried to approach it. We were thinking if we could possibly get an, we weren't, it didn't look like a big spot, so we figured that we could get enough base down there to either bridge it or, you know, make it more stable. And so we built the road back up, and then after, after a couple years, it's starting to do the same thing. And so without knowing exactly what the problem is and approaching it with the correct solution, we're just throwing money at it again and could possibly be looking at the same thing a couple years. So that's why I wanted to do an investigation first, to find out the root of the problem.
And then as I read the proposal, this is for the characterize the subsurface conditions, and then the next phase would be to actually engineer?
Yes, sir. What they'll do is they'll go out, take some borings, and then give us, get the properties and soils and give us their analysis of what's going on and some recommendations on how they would approach it. And then, then, then it's a matter of putting together, it'll probably be a bid, and usually in this type of situation, it's not, there's not much to it in plan development because it's such a small area. It's just usually how you word the specs and, you know, do it sort of performance-based.
Sky, how common is a situation like this?
In certain parts of the county, it's very common, but not to the extent that we saw in this area.
Okay.
There are areas, if you go along, down near Elm Road School, there's a muck trussel in there because, you know, that whole area would sink. And a lot of times what happens is, is the road, you don't get this differential settlement. A lot of times it'll settle, you know, as a, as a whole unit, and so you don't necessarily see these big bumps or anything. But this one, it's just odd because part of the lane settled, part of it didn't, and it, it's not as clear as what we think, but it happens. It's just not to this extent. A lot of times in the southern part of the county, we get it a lot, southeastern part.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Any other questions, comments? If not, do we have approval for the Proposal for Geotechnical Services Field Observation?
Motion to approve.
Second.
The motion is second. Commissioner Morton?
Aye.
Commissioner Hazen?
Aye.
Commissioner Baxmeyer?
Aye.
Thank you.
Sky, before you leave, I just want to say, would you let the Highway Department know that they were very thankful for the job they did yesterday? And unfortunately, be prepared for tomorrow, it sounds like.
Yes, sir. I will let them know that. I was, I, all this is my fault. I jinxed us. Because I got a text from our superintendent, Charlie, shortly after everything went through, and he's like, well, I've only gotten a couple calls down in the southern part of the county. And then I text him back, wow, I really expected a lot more than that. And then the phone went off the hook, so. But I will let them know, we had well over 100 trees down across roads and so forth, and they were able to get out there. Yeah, I think pretty much mostly everything's cleared right now. I think there may be, still may be some stragglers. But what they do is we, they clear the road, push stuff off to the sides, and then we'll come back and clean up the stuff on the side. So a lot of times residents, I'll even this here, so if, you know, get the word out that we will be back to take care of it. Hopefully, the event tomorrow isn't like they're saying, so. But yeah, I will definitely let them know that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we're moving on to approval of NIPSCO easement.
Good evening, or good morning, Bill Shalillo, Economic Development Director, part of Department of Infrastructure Planning and Growth on the 7th and 11th floor. At our last meeting, you approved a, an agreement to transfer property to NIPSCO out on Larison Boulevard out in the New Carlyle area to allow for a development of a gas substation and facility on property owned by the Board of Commissioners. This request today is to allow for an easement, to allow for that work to be done before the property is transferred. Also to allow for an easement to be put on property north of that parcel, also on board of commissioner-owned land, to allow for the transition of that gas to the Synergy Cell site. There's a map in the back of the packet that shows where the easements will be. Staff would request your approval of this easement request, please.
Any questions for Mr. Shalillo regarding this? Read fully. Do we have a motion to approve the easement for gas facilities for NIPSCO?
So move.
Second.
Motion is second. Commissioner Morton?
Aye.
Commissioner Hazen?
Aye.
Commissioner Baxmeyer?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Next is approval of the Consent Agenda. We have a motion to approve.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Commissioner Morton?
Aye.
Commissioner Hazen?
Aye.
Commissioner Baxmeyer?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Next, from JJC, approval of an employment contract with Dr. Jeff Burnett for mental health services.
Good morning. My name is Tara Piana, Director of Operations at the Thomason Frederick Juvenile Justice Center, otherwise known as JJC. What you have in front of you is a contract for Dr. Jeff Burnett. He is a clinical psychologist licensed in the state of Indiana. His duties with this contract would include evaluation of mental health of juveniles at the JJC and discuss psychological issues and concerns regarding juvenile residents with the Director of Mental Health within our facility, review and approve psychological evaluations with the request of the Director of Mental Health at JJC, and assist the Director of Mental Health at the JJC with any other psychological services needed with the detained juveniles. We are asking to pay Dr. Burnett the amount of $250 per hour for an average of three hours per week, not to exceed 10 hours per week. We are looking for approval of this contract, and I welcome any questions.
There's money in the budget already?
Correct.
Set aside?
Yes, in contractual services.
Tony, Raphael, any questions? If not, do we have a motion to approve the employment contract with Dr. Jeff Burnett?
So move.
Second.
The motion is second. Commissioner Morton?
Aye.
Commissioner Hazen?
Aye.
Commissioner Baxmeyer?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Moving on to our recorder, approval of Laredo Agreement for Auto Land Surveying. These are, we've been having a series of these every once in a while for companies wanting to access records. We have a motion to approve the Laredo Agreement for Auto Land Surveying.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Second. Commissioner Morton?
Aye.
Commissioner Hazen?
Aye.
Commissioner Baxmeyer?
Aye.
Motion carries.
And along the same line, an approval of the Laredo Agreement for Five-Star Abstract and Title. We have a motion to approve.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Commissioner Morton?
Aye.
Commissioner Hazen?
Aye.
Commissioner Baxmeyer?
Aye.
Motion carries.
That concludes our regular agenda. We will move on to public comments.
Good morning. Deborah Durell, 21677 Otten Road, South Bend. I have provided a document for your pleasure to read. I am not going to speak on that this morning. That is for your own use. I thought especially Carl would be familiar with this excerpt from Aldo Leopold's Sand County Almanac. What I am bringing to you today, as in past weeks and years, is a message to support holding Amazon to higher standards than we are holding them currently, similar to other tech companies and states. I want to thank Bill Shalillo and some council members for meeting with a few of us on this topic, and hopefully we will be seeing some productive outcomes from that. What I want to share with you first is a few of the lines from a song that Elvis Costello wrote and Alison Krauss sang. Man goes beyond his own decision, gets caught up in the mechanism of swindlers who act like kings and breakers who break everything. A little bird did sing, man has no choice when he wants everything. This is related to the issue of Amazon, unlike other data centers wanting to take the wetlands and the waters over the Kankakee Aquifer near New Carlyle. Peter Freed, who was the former director of Meta in charge of the energy strategy, and now the founding partner of the New Horizon Group, which advises data centers, has stated in an interview that it is unusual for a data center to try to develop around a wetland as it is a known delay and a problem for that development. He also has said that, and this is a paraphrase of a quote in the interview, that he is seeing a gratuitous speculative behavior such as never seen before, as far as land around utilities and power stations, and he sees a coming bubble in that. And so I'm bringing this to you to advocate that we should cut back on the buildings and the investment commitment and the land committed to these data centers. This is a big unknown, even for professionals in the field. The AI is apparently the coming miracle for the human race. But right here around New Carlyle, it is a big problem on the wetlands. I also emailed to you the Stormwater and Wetland Mitigation Study, the 33 pages.
Thank you for your comments. Your three minutes is up.
Thank you. I hope you can read that on your own time.
Who do we have next?
Mr. Kurtz.
Morning, Commissioners. Al Kurtz, Sancho County, EMA, 125 South Lafayette Street, where the doors always open and you're always welcome. Just wanted to give you a quick update with what's going. Doors always open and you're always welcome. Just wanted to give you a quick update with uh what's going on with the storm. Again, outstanding job by Sky and his crew. We were in touch with Charlie, also the city of Mishawaka, South Bend. They really came to bat. We. Ted touched base with all of them. Right now, from AEP, the number uh of people, uh, Mishawaka has its own utility uh system, uh, electrical. Utility and and they did a great job getting it back up. And uh, we are down, I just got an email a little bit ago. Down to eight thousand customers in St. Joe County without power. They expect to have that uh reduced to ninety percent of those. Uh, up and running by eleven o'clock tonight, but they had run into power problems. Uh. The devastation up in the Granger area was pretty significant, as you may know, uh, with a lot of the grids, and it was affecting some of the substations too as they came on. So. Because last night, the state gives us updates hourly and you could see it kind of went up and down the numbers, which confused me. But Mona Livingston said, yeah, some of the grid came up. It caused other problems. So they're working hard. Uh. Yesterday, Jim and I ran damage assessments. We had the uh uh sta- our, we call him our handler. He's the district two coordinator for IDAs. We kind of took the north half of the county and Jim ran south Mishawaka and stuff observing. Jim was also able, there was actually eight hundred. Utility trucks, uh, electrical utility trucks staged at the fairgrounds that come in mutual aid from all over to help prepare the grid. Not only our county, the big area too. And uh, Jim was able with the. Four-H manager and AEP uh to secure off-duty police officers to get paid to come out there to provide security for these trucks to make sure they wouldn't. So. Uh, the other thing, we established a two-one-one portal through the Family Services, Family Social Services Administration. Also, that portal, if you go on. Say you had a tree block in your car or smashed it, you can link on there. They could get you a ride to your doctor appointment or they're 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 kind of a way. To help you provide services. The big thing with that two-one-one portal, what was the best way to cover uh the damages uh within the county? We need to hit at least twenty-five major damages to residential structures to try to be able to. Be available for that Small Business Administration loan. Honestly, it doesn't look like we're gonna hit it. Uh, it's gonna be close. However. Stark County, because we're uh, we have some contiguity to them a little bit. If they could hit it and they they had some pretty severe damage. Uh, we could be tagged in on that. So we'll find out. Uh, I um access the data from the portal. The state doesn't have anybody that can pull it out and send it. So uh. Uh, they gave us clearance to go in there and when we go back to our office, we're gonna be doing that. So uh, hate to be the bearer of bad news though. Uh, another storm coming tomorrow and they think it's gonna be worse than the last one. And we also have. The moist ground and it has the the characteristic three out of five, which is increased risk factor. So the potential could be worse. I hope it's not. But uh, we'll, I'll send you an update like we did before on that National Weather Service on their last blip and uh. We're also sharing it with uh uh security staff here just because the portal, it'll change. It changes hourly. Could be between three and nine o'clock tomorrow afternoon when this comes in. So uh. Yeah, we need to take it serious. And again, there was no documented tornado down in St. Joe County. The only tornadoes that hit were south in Marshall a little bit and then up by Edwardsburg in St. Joe County, Michigan, had a documented tornado.
Really, if we've received some calls or questions about the sirens not going off.
Yeah.
Do address that?
Yeah, uh, again, and Jim and I had just gone through this Storm Spotter Certification Class about ten days ago. But the criteria is the tornado, it it's a funnel cloud with debris flying around it. Or down to the ground. And and a lot of people get confused with the wind shear, the downforce winds and stuff, but the criteria has always been. For a documented tornado and the best alert comes from the National Weather Service. They pick it up on their radar and go and they'll pull the trigger. But it can also come. Last year, when we had the F zero tornado. That clipped the end of the Meyer store and the Lazy Boy and went over to Raising Canes and did havoc with their lawn furniture outside. Uh, that was a weird one because they were having a little trouble picking it up and and visual documentation was that. So. We have to be careful because a lot of people will want to go out and they'll see what they think is a tornado and it's clearly not a tornado. It's just the clouds as they come and so uh. We try to encourage people to use uh the weather apps that you can download, uh, go to a news station. They did a good job, the news media. Uh, they even broke into some of the NCAA games to let you know when the storms were coming and stuff, gave us plenty of lead time. But uh, same as El Carte, El Carte did not turn their sirens on and they had a whole building collapse. That it was just wind shear. Seventy to eighty mile an hour winds. So those are pretty damaging. It's something, though, in the future, we could re- uh revisit, but I think if we were setting them off for every little severe weather event. Uh, with wind shear, it it might not be to our advantage.
That was gonna be my question. Do we set that or does the National Weather set when the tornado warnings go off?
If if uh National Weather Service can pull the trigger on it right away and also like a uh public safety officer. And primarily, police officers are out there and a lot of times county police officers. And if somebody says, hey, I saw a funnel cloud. They try to make sure a police officer or something, because if we didn't have that, we'd have people calling them in like false alarms for fires for a building. But. Yeah, documentation by a public safety officer or a trained weather spotter can call it in.
Um, Mr. Kurtz, I would just like to commend you and Mr. Lopez on your quick response and uh reaching out. Um, about the two-one-one service for people. Um, that was, I thought that was outstanding. So thank you.
It, yeah, first time we've had to use it around here and uh, yeah, so we're learning. We're gonna have a hot wash when this is all over on what we can do better and build from it.
But but you are saying that de- depending on what you said, Stark County, depending on the numbers they come up with, that's what I determine if this money is here for a reimbursement?
Yeah, a- actually, it's a Small Business Administration loan, much like they did in the flooding in two thousand eighteen, was it, Jim? I think seventeen. Yeah, sixteen and eighteen, uh, where say your insurance isn't gonna cover everything or you have no insurance. You can take a Small Business Administration loan and it's at usually a one percent interest rate. So it'll help you get back on your feet and repair your damage. And also, I gotta tell you, uh, pine trees are beautiful, but boy, they are like a shallow root balls and you see some of the damage out there. A lot of our trees are old, fifty, sixty years at the maturity rate. A lot of them had rot, we've noticed inside of them, even in the old part of the city, uh. Seventeen hundred block of Brookfield Huey over that way. Uh, they had some big trees go down and so it hit everywhere. It it was over. It was amazing areas where they didn't have damage. I was surprised, but it was just that wind shear as it came. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else in the room wish to offer a comment? If not, we're gonna move to the those folks online. Not sure I see any hands up today. If not, do we have a motion to recess?
So move. Second.
Motion is second. Commissioner Morton?
Hi.
Commissioner Hazen?
Hi.
Commissioner Baxmeyer?
Hi.
We are recessed.
Thank you, everybody.